Okay, good morning. We'll call the meeting to order for the day. First item is approval of today's agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve today's agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye. O, same sign, motion carries. Citizens to be heard. Seeing none, well, we do have some citizens, but they don't want to be heard just yet, so. Approved minutes of the October 6th and 13th, 2015 meetings.
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor signify by saying aye. O, same sign, motion carries. Approved payment of bills and vouchers.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. O, same sign, motion carries. Okay, Health Administrator Kathy McKay. Request approval to hire one full-time child and teen checkups, community liaison and analyst and health specialist.
Wow, good morning. You got that down pat. Okay, this is a position that is a new position. The funding comes to the Community Health Board, to the four counties, and the reason the request is coming, number one, we have additional eligible children in our outreach. This is for child and teen checkup outreach. Our child and teen checkup programs is to ensure that we get these children and teens in for a comprehensive child health, early identification of problems, assessments, treatments, and just ensure that good health habits. So, our goal is to ensure that we get eighty percent participation rate. Now, these are children on medical assistance or Minnesota Care. And so, we have a number of eligible children in each of our counties. In Clay County, we have six thousand five hundred and eighty-eight children that are eligible for this program. It's zero to twenty through twenty years of age. And so, the eighty percent where we're falling behind is really getting the teens, outreach to those teens. We're certainly reaching the younger children we have through our other programs, through WIC, through our family home visiting, et cetera. So, we're really being able to get to the younger group. It's the teens that we're falling behind on. And we're required to provide outreach to all of those age categories. So, the four county directors, all four of us got together to determine how we're going to strategize about reaching the teens. And so, we came up with this plan, is that we will have a specialist that's just going to be working in the four counties. So, you know, he or she will be traveling around to those four counties and really outreach to the teens. So, that's the request. The funding is state and federal funds. We are, there is no county dollars that are put into this program. The funds are available. We have enough funding with the entire budget to add this position along with, it pays for everything entailed in this, with this one FTE. It will cover the benefits, et cetera. We determined that Clay County would be employing this person. Our program director is Clay County Director, Leslie Whitty. She was here last week when we talked about the program.
Thank you. Jenny?
I appreciate you coming back. I did request that you come back so we could have a little bit of a discussion on this. My first question, I appreciate the fact that this is a grant-funded position and that there's no Clay County specific dollars. My concern, though, comes, we just wrapped up budget. And so, I don't recall this being in part of that budget planning and oversight. Is there a reason that that wasn't presented during, this wasn't presented during that time?
Right, because this funding, this is, sometimes our grants are on different schedules than when we present our budget. But this is a four-county budget, so it comes to the Community Health Board, technically. And it is funded, the funding we receive is, each four county, each of the four counties receives money that comes into Clay County. So, it wouldn't have been, we would not have been aware of that funding. And we didn't make a plan to add this additional person. We had to go through a process. It has to also be state-approved prior to us bringing it to the board. So, that's why it wasn't part of the budgeting process.
Okay. And then my other concern, you know, I guess I take a little bit of an issue with the fact that this is a position that is a hundred percent approved by this Clay County Board, but it, it's a person that will go work within four counties. And so, I just, there's some gray area there where I have a little bit of concern as to, is she or he or she driving a Clay County vehicle in all of these four different counties? I mean, is that standard practice?
Yes, as part of our Community Health Board, and maybe to clear up some of that, we, you know, in Minnesota, we have what we call Community Health Boards, and they can be multi-county, they can be single county. And we did this process over, oh, probably a three-year period. We had a Clay-Wilken Community Health Board, you might be aware of when we talked about that. And we decided to expand that based on resources, based on revenue, based on efficiencies. So, we did a long process where we decided we would incorporate Becker and Ottertail into our Community Health Board. So, we're now a four-county Community Health Board. And, and it is, you know, it has been a joint powers agreement approved Board. We also have MOUs where we share staff and share resources. So, we have all of the documents in place and have worked with, you know, the, all the legal processes that we went through. We used the Ottertail County Attorney to provide all, some of that legal direction. And this is going to be commonplace. We're going to be using staff. We do now, some of our staff work in, we have one individual, in fact, that works in Wilken County to cover some long-term care assessments. We share staff as we can, depending on gaps, vacancies. This funding that comes through, Clay County is the fiscal manager of all the Community Health Board funding. So, the funding technically is just not Clay County's funding. It belongs to that Community Health Board and to those four counties. We have to have, the joint powers agreement does not approve that we hire, so that we are not a Community Health Board that has employees. So, the, all the employees still are part of their own county. So, that's how, you know, I don't, I don't foresee in the future, some counties have done that, where they've become completely independent, and they have their own staff, et cetera. They're not part of, part of a county system. We determined that we didn't want to go that route. We want to remain part of our own county systems. And so, this will be common practice where we'll share staff and share resources. But the funding is there for us to do that. And part of that is an efficient, an efficiency process. For this grant in particular, it doesn't pay for each county to have a outreach person dedicated to child and teen checkup.
Right. But I guess maybe my point is, is that if, if a person is going to be working a quarter time in Clay County, then go to that specific board and ask for the quarter time, or the quarter time in Ottertail County. It seems as though Clay County is assuming all of, even though we're the fiscal agent, it seems that Clay County is assuming all of the risk for that employee, whether they're in Clay County or not. Is that fair statement?
But the, but the funding follows that. So, it's with any employee, if Ottertail hires an employee, and they serve the four counties, it would be the same difference, or Wilken County or Becker County. This is part of the, this is part of what is the Community Health Board process. This is kind of the way it is across the whole state. So, except for those Community Health Boards that are hiring their own.
The caseload for this person, are, is it equally divided between counties, or? So, I would, I mean typically, or would Clay County have a higher percentage of clients than the other counties, or is it fairly equally?
Clay and Ottertail, of course, being the bigger counties, have the higher number of eligible children. Wilken County, you know, significantly less, and Becker County a little bit less. So, you know, it'll be divided out as the number of children are, you know, in each county. And the funding will follow that. So, part of this whole budget for the Community Health Board, there will be allocated amount for this position.
Wayne?
Thank you. Kathy, does White Earth reservation involve in this, or are they separate?
They're separate.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to make an observation. I think Commissioner Mondo really brings up an interesting discussion point with all of shared positions, is that we've had a couple employees, even though it's rare, cost us tens of thousands of dollars with employee issues or something, if we had to terminate them, and it goes through the court system and things. So, not to, not to say that to shed any shadow on it, but just so that you're aware that when you take on that responsibility, you do take on a greater county responsibility for the, for the, so, I understand why, why Ms. McKay wants to do that, but.
But I think, excuse me, but I think on the board, we had decided that certain positions, Clay County's going to be responsible for some things, or some of the county and stuff like that. Becker was going to take on some responsibility for some of the things, and they're going to hire those people. And I guess you've already explained that, you know, but we are dividing them. Not everybody's a Clay County employee that's in the community, actually. Partnership for Health.
Right, correct.
They're divided out. So, this one, we're going to probably take our responsibility.
Sure.
The next one, we probably won't, you know, but.
Every county.
I don't know how you divide it out, I mean, how it's, how it comes out equally, but when you have these partnerships, I guess that's.
I suppose my, my position is that I, I'm concerned in the gray area and the risk that it does pose to Clay County. And if you're saying that public health is moving in that direction, where there's a lot of positions that are going to be that way, I take an issue with that. And I guess I have a concern.
Okay. Anything else, Jenny? Anybody else?
Quick question. Kathy, on what you have in front of us, do you need, do you have, do you need one motion, or do you need three?
The other two were approved at the last board meeting, so it's just this one.
Okay. I move approval of that.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Oh, and the, the second one, I don't know if you, that was a contract, but we're going to move that to a variable hour position. So, I don't know if that was removed off the agenda.
Yeah, you wouldn't need action.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy.
Okay, well, we've got Kirk. Maybe we can do, approve the bids for concrete for landfill.
What happens when we show up early?
Yeah. That means you get out of here early.
Well, that's a good, that's a good thing. There's plenty of stuff to do yet. I'll tell you that.
It looks like you got a fairly thick.
Well, that's, that's, I, that was just in case I had some extra time. You know, that was the only.
Yeah.
And we don't want to have any extra time. Well, it makes me look smarter, too, is the other thing. And I need all the help I can get.
Well, that's not going too far.
Uh, they come before you. They, as you probably remember, we took quite a bit of concrete from the power plant that was deconstructed, City of Morehead. I was not real happy. I just had come on board at that time. I wasn't real happy about taking the amount of material that we were going to take. It was about thirty-five hundred to four thousand tons of concrete. They wanted, wanted us to take it and fill our airspace out of the landfill. It's slightly tainted with mercury, so they can't do anything else with it except to put it out the landfill. So, what we did is we went to the PCA, got a special use permit, and this request is to crush the concrete, use it for projects in the landfill. We went out to, or actually, I didn't go out, but Nathan went out, got three bids. And the lowest bid that I included in the pack was from Fitzgerald Construction, and it's for a total of twenty-nine thousand one hundred and thirty dollars. So, I'm asking for approval for it.
Jenny?
Can you just refresh my memory? How did the material get tainted with mercury?
It's just, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, it's basically from the process burning, burning coal. It produces mercury. And, you know, it, it was just absorbed by the concrete, basically. So, that's what, what happened.
Is there an issue because of the Red River itself as mercury? And if it was, it was close to the river, would that have any issues there?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I think that obviously that's, that's a concern. And I think that's one of the other issues, is that it's driving some of the major power plants to move away from coal to natural gas. It's just a cleaner bearing fuel.
Any other questions for Kirk? Board's wishes?
Move to approve. A little bit of a second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O, same sign, motion carries. Thanks, Kirk.
All right, just one, one more thing quickly. I just wanted to, last Thursday, I got this. And this is basically a distillation of this, which is our landfill permit. We just received the permit from the PCA to have our landfill re-permitted. The, the big book represented about a year and a half of work, about seventy-five thousand dollars of investment from the county to, to put all this together and explore the different activities at the landfill. And I will tell you, the last three weeks was probably the toughest of getting this permit, but we finally got the permit. And I, I think that's something that's going to be pretty good for the county for the next ten years. So, one other thing as part of this, and you'll be hearing this here in the next couple of weeks, one of the conditions of the permit was the updating of the industrial waste permit, or industrial solid waste management plan. I went in the process of doing that, and it's going to be discussed at the Solid Waste Advisory Committee on Thursday. So, we'll have that before you for approval here in the next couple of weeks. So, that's moving in the right direction. So, anyway, this is something to be pretty, pretty pleased with.
Good work.
Thank you, ma'am. Good work, Kirk. Appreciate it. Dave, come on up. County Engineer Dave Overbow, approval to fill Assistant County Engineer position.
Yeah, we unfortunately got another resignation. Our Assistant Engineer is going to work for the Mendat in Detroit Lakes, in, in a capacity that will be working with counties on a daily basis as a state aid engineer. So, I, I think it's, you know, in all in all, it's, it's good for the county, because we'll have a very good relationship with our state aid engineer. But unfortunately, we lose a wealth of knowledge, a very hard-working employee, and, you know, very talented individual. So, I guess I'd like to get approval as quickly as I can. His last day, I think, is November thirteenth. So, there's a little time yet. Supervisor's required to give thirty days. So, yeah, I guess I got it on the gen as quick as I could. And we'll start the process, and I'll kind of work with Brian and the Highway Committee. We've got some ideas, you know, just in the, in the case that we maybe don't get a lot of applicants, you know, maybe we can, right now, we've always looked for a registered engineer. I guess I thought as a backup plan, if we don't, we could look for someone that's got the engineer in training exam passed. So, after you get your four-year degree, you have to take an eight-hour exam, and that's your engineer in training. Work under an engineer for four years, and then write your, your exam, your PE exam, or professional engineer exam. So, I just, but maybe it'll never happen that way. Maybe we'll, you're advertising, get lots of good applicants.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, I lost Mendat's game there, so.
Just me?
Yes.
So, move.
Second.
Okay, move to approve. And a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O, same sign, motion carries. An approval of bids for Batumis overlay.
This is the two projects that we added to our five-year plan a couple of weeks ago. This project in particular, we're looking at using county funds. The other project was County Road Six, and that was a grading and, grading and paving project in a two-year span using state aid funds. Bids came in a little higher than we had hoped. And I think the biggest reason was, you know, we joined with the watershed on a joint project. And it's, it's primarily, it's a dirtwork job, because they're rebuilding our roadway as, as part of their Western levy. And so, it's essentially, it's kind of a dirt job. And for some reason, the Batumis numbers, and they were the same on, on their Section A and our Section B, but the, the numbers came in a little higher than we had hoped. It's not, you know, obviously, it's not an awful lot more, but we're actually, we're, we thought maybe our numbers were a little higher than they needed to be. And I guess they were fairly close. So, it looked, our, our engine estimate was four hundred and seventy-nine thousand four seventy, and it came in about eleven thousand six hundred and sixty higher. So, I, I still think we should move forward. It's a good time to get the overlay done. I think it needs it. What, what we plan on doing is probably working a little bit with, you know, we've got like a two-inch thickness on most of the project, probably adjusting things just a little bit. So, we'll probably come in right at our estimate without sacrificing anything. Because as you, as you do your projects, it doesn't take much, just a little tiny bit of lowering on the, on the paving machine, and you can come a little under, you can under-run your asphalt a little bit. And, you know, the, I think it's like fifty-five or sixty dollars a ton, doesn't take long to make up ten grand. And on the other side of the coin, the contractors, they like to increase the math always a little bit, and then they overrun that much. So, that's, that's why we have our inspectors out there on a daily basis doing yield checks and stuff like that.
Any questions for David on this one? Kevin?
Was, is that all the low bidder?
Yep, they're the prime contractor.
Were they looking at on both projects then?
Yep, exactly. Yep, yep. One, one low bidder. They're the subcontractor for paving's going to be Nathan Materials, who we had down on County Road Fifty-two.
Are the board's wishes?
I move approval of the, the bid.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries. Thanks, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
Kevin, the bid was right back. Yeah, but there was.
One thing we can't do is pick part A, part B.
Well, that's, yeah, because see, that's what I had heard, because I had heard that there was actually a, a lower bid.
Yeah.
On our portion. And so, our portion was tied to eight.
Correct.
So, we had to take it at the whole.
Right.
Because I heard there was, there is a lower bid on our portion.
Add a little more part, let's say it doesn't matter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, committee reports. Wayne?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On a Tuesday, October thirteenth, Lake Agassiz Regional Library Union Negotiations, a three-year contract was discussed and settled. A three percent increase per year was increased and reached, and contract was settled. Negotiations in about one hour. Wednesday, October fourteenth, Lake Agassiz Regional Library for Northern Lights Library Network, an executive meeting to prepare and go over the upcoming quarterly board meeting, in particular, the audit. On Thursday, October fifteenth, Lake Agassiz Regional Library Executive Committee Meeting, General Business, Financial Report, All As Well, Director's Report, this included the implementation of an updated library code of conduct. This will be posted at all the libraries and link sites of the Lake Agassiz Regional Library, and also shared with all the law enforcement agencies within the seven county area of the Lake Agassiz Regional Library System. And then, we have the President's Report. Friday, October sixteenth, for Children's Mental Health, Clay County Early Childhood Initiative Meeting. General Business, update on the Early Childhood Mental Health Network that includes Clay, Becker, Wilken, and Ottertail Counties, along with the White Earth Indian, White Earth Indian Reservation. Updates on several other areas of the Early Childhood Initiative. The many needs of children in foster care were emphasized. Strollers, car seats, diapers, wipes, form, formula, and other items are needed. Home visiting for families with children with concerns was also discussed, and then there were agency reports. Saturday, October seventeenth, again, for the Lake Agassiz Regional Library, the Northern Lights Library Network Full Board Meeting. General Business, we went over the fiscal two thousand and fifteen audit. It came out flawless and all as well. Updates from all the regional library systems within the twenty-three county areas, which are covered by the Northern Lights Library Network. And that's my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Frank?
Tuesday, I went to a workforce availability thing that we had, and you know, the guy presented, said that, you know, that Clay County, that we've got good growth, we're a young county, that we have a workforce that's underemployed, you know, and it, and some of the things, that some of our people are not ready for the employment that we need. Sometimes it's because of childcare, sometimes because of language barriers. We have the workforce here, but they're not suited for the jobs that are, I mean, they're not available. We don't have the qualities for the jobs that we have. So, that was pretty much to send it out. But like I say, we, Clay County is, we've got very good growth. There's a group that's trying to work to fit people with the job and the job requirement. So, I think that's what they're trying to work on there, on that program. Wednesday, went to the diversion meeting, the, the Miami Mountain Impact Statement that was presented by, I think, the State of Minnesota, I guess it is, that they've put on. And they get a pretty good presentation. I mean, there was twenty-nine speakers that got up and spoke about whether they're for it or against it, you know. And they all said, yeah, I'm for it, or I'm against it, let's get it going, and all that. But I don't know if anybody really came up with an alternate plan, you know. It just, we should do more studies, but I don't know. We've got a, a lot of people who've done a lot of studies on this already.
There wasn't anything new.
There was nothing new presented, you know, other than, I mean, they're for this, I'm against it. So, it was, it was interesting, good presentation, but I don't know if anything changed from it. Also, Thursday, I went to Youth Intervention Program. There, again, it's pretty much the same thing as far as we view, what can we do for our young adults? They're looking at how much it's costing us to put them in jails, detention centers, residential treatment, and they feel like if, for every dollar, well, their survey says for every dollar invested, we get a return of four eighty-nine. So, they're looking more at trying to get the youth at a younger age, you know, try and do more programs when they're younger, instead of just putting them in jail and try and work with them then. You know, we've got to work with them before then. So. Also, on Thursday, Metricog Meeting. There, again, we just went over, they're going to hire a new secretary there again, and we have more turn over there. Also, got an update on the Matbus that's running pretty good. It's interesting, they're trying to do a Google thing on Matbus where you can go on your phones, I guess, and you find out where the bus is at, which bus, which buses you take, you know, where, how close is the bus to your, where you're at, you know. So, it's going to be an interesting thing there. You don't have to sit, sit there and wait sometimes, so you know where the bus is going to be at, you know, how long you're going to be waiting and stuff like that. So. Another interesting thing that they had was the road call voting. State of North Dakota, something, implemented something that every vote that you take, you have to do a road call vote. So, lengthens the meeting a little bit, you know. I don't know if State of Minnesota's going to go that or not, you know. But anything that involves a procedural-type thing, you know, we have to do a road call vote there. So, and I think we had around twelve, twelve members present there, thirteen. So, for each vote, it took a little bit of time to go through. So, that was nice enough.
Thank you. Jenny?
I have a couple of weeks of it. I apologize for missing last week. I was able to serve on jury duty. So, I was, attended the land management meeting a couple of weeks ago. We kind of went over the itemization of some properties that have been acquired in Oxbow. And there's some concerns about the diversion authority seeking out bids. Their recommendation is to try and seek out bids and get the low bid if possible. The Community Facilities Task Force met, we, just a, a quick meeting met to discuss the, the referendum in Morehead as they progress towards that vote in a couple of weeks. And we just, from the community, or the county, talked about the properties that we're acquiring. We haven't done a whole lot, because our jail is in the design phase. So, and then from the city, we talked about some infrastructure a little bit. But that was, that was about it. It was just a short meeting. I had the Lakes and Prairies Transitional Meeting in Fergus. Our, I think, we discussed taking a survey for the board members and to see where are we at. We are six months into sharing an executive director, what's going well, what's not going well. I think that Steve has given the boards a December twenty sixteen date, so we. that Steve has given the boards a December twenty sixteen date, so we still have a, a little bit of time to figure out what we want in the next executive director. I also attended the D N R meeting at the Marriott and I appreciate the D N R coming to hear concerns of community members. It's unfortunate that some people in the community felt it was a opportunity to say whether they were for or against the project when it, it deals with econo- or environmental impacts, so. Uh, I appreciate those people that did have any concerns on, on any, uh, environmental impacts to speak up, but it also gave residents an opportunity to meet and see the maps and, and talk with the professionals about what that project would entail. I also attes- attended the At Risk to Full Potential Youth Summit. I appreciate that group bringing in a variety of people to discuss what is affecting youth in, in Clay County and Moorhead and what's available to youth and, and it's important to get that discussion going. Those were people that I'm not necessarily on other boards with, so. It's good to hear their perspective and, uh, position. I also attended the MetroCog meeting, uh, as an alternate and, uh, Frank covered that well. And last night, I attended a childcare town hall for Greater Than Minnesota in Holly and, and part of what Frank talked about with employees and lack of childcare is very real. There's, uh, wait lists for childcare. Oftentimes, people have to reserve a childcare spot before they even intend on having a baby just because there are such shortfalls and, uh, Representative Markwart and Senator Ekin was there as well, so I appreciate their presence. That concludes my reports.
Thank you. Kevin?
Thank you. I also have, have to go back two weeks. As I was out of town last week, um, in my, my meetings consisted of the diversion authority outreach meeting and, and, um, we had gotten a preliminary report on N D S U's research that they're doing on, on the impacts to ag land and crop loss. And that continued over then to, that was the major subject along with the Minnesota E I S upcoming, uh, meeting that was held last week. And then also the, uh, at the diversion authority meeting, we also, uh, met early and, and got the report from N D S U. Um, it's, it's, the report isn't complete, but it is starting to, uh, they broke it down into hundreds of different sections and how the potential, if the dam was put in place during a major flood, what impacts there would be to just about every section of land in, in the county and the time delays that might happen and, and if there would be crop loss and if there'd be a delay in planting. It was a pretty good report, but, uh, it's not quite complete yet and they're still working on it. The, um, and of course, the discussions was also on the Minnesota E I S coming last week. And I did go to that meeting and I, I do want to follow up with one of your comments, Commissioner Gross, in terms of, um, uh, alternatives. One of the alternatives that, um, uh, the opposition to this plan now would like us to, or now wants the D N R to look at again is the original N E D plan. And the original N E D plan is the Minnesota diversion.
Yeah.
And, uh, if you think there's environmental problems, uh, with the North Dakota process, try putting that thing through Dilworth and through the railroad in Dilworth and talk about some environmental problems there. Uh, so, you know, it, it was, it was actually brought up by two different attorneys that spoke before, uh, the D N R about that issue, saying that that should be looked at as an alternative. And I think before the twenty-eighth, this board really needs to consider sending in something of concern about the original N E D plan not being our choice. Uh, because they, they're actually saying now that, that they should be looking at putting, using the Minnesota diversion as opposed to the North Dakota diversion. In addition, um, before, before next week and hopefully by next week, uh, we can gather some additional information on what is this, considered this northern alignment option that the D N R is still looking at. It's my understanding that there would be an additional sixty-some or approximately sixty additional structures in, on the Minnesota side homes that would be impacted by moving that structure a mile and a half north. I also believe that there would probably be more ag land affected by, by the northern alignment on the Clay County side than the Cass County side. So, you know, each end, everybody has an opportunity to, to be heard and, and address public comments to the D N R. And I would hope this board would, um, seriously consider what ramifications of these things are if they are the chosen option, what it would do to, uh, Clay County as opposed to the current North Dakota alignment. And I think that we should be considering sending something in, uh, to the D N R.
Well, my question about that, Kevin, though, is the D N R is not going to decide on an alignment, are they?
Well, what, what.
That, 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 they're, they're just bringing that up as that, that would be a, an option if that were chosen, but they're not going to choose anything, are they?
Well, but what, what they can do is, what do they call it, Brian, the certificate of, uh, the, the final process goes through. They could actually, uh, no, not before the permitting, the, uh, there's a process there where they could, they could say that one passes and one does not. It's my understanding of it.
Yeah, I'm trying to.
That's a different process, though. This is the environmental impact study. I mean, that, if, if we as a board have an issue with the soil erosion that's going to occur, then maybe as a board, we should submit a comment, but in no way is it appropriate for us to jump ahead of process and endorse a certain plan or position when it has nothing to do with the environmental impact.
I guess my point is, is that.
Then, then why did the opposition do it?
Yeah.
Pardon?
Why did the opposition stand up and say that the Minnesota?
Did I just say that that wasn't appropriate? I said that this is the environmental impact.
Well, here, here's, my, my point is, is that, um, at, at least in, as far as the E I S goes, at least unless I'm misunderstanding it, that the D N R is not going to, you know, make it, you know. In, in terms of the E I S study that they're, they're finishing up now, they're not going to make a decision on any kind of alignment. They're just looking at the, the environmental impacts and, and, you know, they're trying to finish that. But so, the, the end result of whatever they do here is they're not, they're not going to say that the only option is, is the northern alignment, uh, that, so.
And Commissioner Landware did say in his very first comment, this is not a decision-making document.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, and I, and I do agree with that.
Yeah.
But I, you know, I, I think when we're, when we're talking about, um, you know, one thing, one thing in the report, they aren't decision-makers and they, they do talk about, um, you know, in their preliminary release of their E I S, they talk about not, cost and everything isn't all that you look at, but it still can be a factor in a project. It's, they state it right in their report that, but it could be superseded by other issues. But when you're looking at an overall project, cost still is a factor. Fact of the matter is, is the, the northern alignment is going to cost eighty million dollars more to do. Um, and I certainly believe that, that the, if they've got testimony in that says that they need to look at the original N E D as a legitimate option to the current alignment. They, they raised the legal argument about it. Both those attorneys did. They raised the legal argument about it. And alls I'm saying is that if you want to talk about environmental, start trying to go through the aquifer in Minnesota. Try going through the railroad land in, in, in Minnesota. Those are environmental issues, big environmental issues.
Yeah. Commissioner Campbell, you're more than entitled to te- submit testimony on your own behalf.
Right.
If you have a belief, then submit testimony. I feel like North Dakota didn't follow due process when they proceeded with the work in Oxbow and I would expect that Minnesota elected officials could at least follow due process and allow the study to go forth. And then after that point, if we as a board feel that we need to endorse a certain route over another, then that's appropriate. This is not the appropriate.
Well, and, and maybe, um, Kevin, you can speak with the, uh, the diversion authority border attorneys and find out if there, if there is a, a legal issue that, that they think we should take a stand on that, you know, and that may be the way to, to approach it because, you know, at, at, at least I, you know, I, I, I'm comfortable that the, 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 the way the statements came out, it was basically a replay of what's been going on since the project started and so, you know, uh, I, I don't really see that with the C I S as the D N R's role or decision-making and determining any kind of alignment and that, that's still going to be left with the diversion board of authority from what, what I can tell and so. Uh, but, you know, if, if there's something that is being missed from a legal perspective, then that, that should be addressed, so.
Okay. We'll leave it at that.
Okay.
Yeah, and that was, that's all I had to reply on.
Okay. Okay, well, I was fortunate enough to go to the E I S meeting also last Wednesday and, um, I think we've discussed that at length. I had a radio board meeting in Thief River Falls last week and, uh, we looked at, uh, our budgeting for next year and some training issues in terms of, uh, emergency communication issues and yesterday I had a land of the dancing sky, which is the area agency on aging meeting in the East Grand Forks and had an update on everything that's going on there and our transition and everything is going well, so that was it for me. Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, several of the meetings have already been talked about. Lake's country was after the board meeting, the last Tuesday, and I think Commissioner, um, Gross covered that quite well on the workforce availability. Um, Commissioner Mojo covered the community facilitation, uh, facilities, city, county, and school. Just an update on some, some issues there. I attended a press conference on that Wednesday morning of last week on behalf of the Public Affairs Committee. Ahead of the D N R E I S event, that's already been talked about. I attended that as well. Uh, we had an advisory, administrative advisory, uh, meeting on Thursday, the day after the E I S evening function, and that was talked about as well. And, um, don't really need to say a whole lot more there, I guess, in the fact that, uh, some of the things, those position statements were made and, and just reassured that this was a fact-finding mission versus, uh, opinionated and, and, um, went from there. We had a central administration management meeting Thursday morning as well. Then I attended in the afternoon, the At Risk Youth Meeting, and both Commissioner Mojo and Gross were at that meeting as well to talk about. Uh, what was discussed was, uh, and I guess the question that keeps coming up with me at my ripe old age is we keep investing and investing, investing in these preventive programs, and thank goodness that we do. Uh, because we have a lot of youth at risk out there, but boy, the numbers don't seem to be coming down. It seems like we're adding to them every day. And, um, I, I think we agreed that we're dealing with symptoms of a greater problem, a greater societal problem. And, uh, I can't tell you what that greater societal problem is, family breakdown, whatever it might be, but, but they're out there and if you have the answers, please step forward. Because it's, it's hurting us a great deal. I sent you, forwarded you email yesterday that, uh, Julie had sent me from the jail and our count out of county yesterday was sixty.
Unbelievable.
Eighty in county and sixty out of county. That's a hundred and forty prisoners yesterday, folks, for a county our size. Things are not going well.
Well, I sent you back that email. I'm not sure that what we're planning is enough based on the numbers we're getting, so, I mean.
And, you know, Ju- Julie had followed up with an email before that and she said that, you know, the two pods that we are talking about making room for in the future, that that probably needs be part of the plan versus being an option for later addition that we should go forward as that being a phase. And she's probably correct on that, so, uh, we'll have to talk about that, so. Had some meetings, referenced some personnel issues with Darren and other departments. Lori Kirk and I met in, yesterday afternoon in regards to a financing plan that we had been asked to, uh, from the Highway Tracking Committee. I think there's been an update at times after Highway Tracking about a facility out in the eastern part of the county and that's in the planning stage and, uh, right now it's looking at, at one of the options of putting it on the, uh, landfill property out there because landfill now needs facilities as well for storage since you folks have invested in a semi and two different trailers. And they need to be inside, so looking like at a joint facility. So we met and we, we will be presenting a, a financial plan process for that to Highway Tracking and then it'll go to Solid Waste Advisory and then come to the board for your review as well, so we're going to keep you updated on that. And that's about it, Mr. Chair.
I do have one.
Thank you, yeah. Jenny?
One slot of information that I thought was intriguing presented to us at the, uh, facility, joint facilities meeting. Uh, it talks about the metro areas in Minnesota and over the past year. And the Moorhead Fargo Metropolitan grew four percent in the last year. Uh, the Minneapolis-St. Paul Metro grew two percent, Grand Forks, two and a half percent, St. Cloud, a little over one percent. So as we talk about all the needs and programming needs, it's because we are growing at a rate that's more than any other metro in the, in the Minne- Minnesota, so just wanted to share that.
Yeah, that's good information and definitely something we need to consider when we're making our decisions on some of these projects that affect the future of the county, so. Anything else to come to, Kevin?
I do have a copy of this, um, um, document that was presented by the, um, N D S U Research regarding the, um, potential losses to ag land and, uh, on the diversion project. I'll leave this with Vicki if anybody would like to read it. It's good, good information.
Okay, thank you. Vicki, anything else for us about our legal team? Nothing? Okay, we're adjourned.